For the religions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated, thank you. All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the public hearing to order. Anita, do you have anything?
Do you want to give a brief overview or?
Okay.
Okay.
Come on up.
Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Same thing we've been discussing over the past time I was here, between when Primrose, still looking at moving forward with Primrose for a medically complex unit that we'd be putting over there. So, do you have any questions on?
I think the only question that I know I have, and this might be something the other councilmen, one of the things that points about was the fencing.
Correct.
That we had talked about.
Yes, sir.
And that we made sure was kind of in the language of the city ordinance. Can you kind of tell us where we're at with that?
Yeah, absolutely. We were 100% on board. Did show that in the board. I believe that was in your package at one point, so it will be essentially that fence, that same exact type fence. One of the things that we were even able to do is, instead of being at those first two corners, we could actually push that back a little bit because those two exit doors are just a smidgen further back, so that fence isn't so far up. We can push it back just a little bit, just for that appearance to be just a little bit more pleasing.
Mayor, we had about three meetings built, and we have a thousand questions. And he could answer all thousands.
Okay.
And that boy with Frank Lee that was treated positively about the situation, how he spoke that out to us.
Okay. Awesome. That was the only thing I think that was due out from the last time we talked. Alderman, do you have any other questions? I know the Public Works Committee has drilled them enough on everything, but I think we're pretty set. Any other question before we close the... Is there anybody else here? Thank you very much. Appreciate you. Yeah, thank you. Is there anybody else here for the public hearing for the Primrose Street project? Nothing? Anita, do you have anything before we close the public hearing?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public... Yes, I'm sorry?
Do we have a form?
I haven't done that yet. We're just doing the public hearing.
I'm just looking.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing.
A vote to close it. Got a vote to close.
Yep, thank you very much. A motion by George, seconded by Walter. Call the roll for closing the public hearing. Thank you, George.
Glenn.
Yes.
Michael. Oops, he's not here. My bad. Michael's not here. Walter.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Okay, now I'd like to go ahead and call the regular meeting, council meeting to order. We do certify that we have a quorum. Can we go ahead and please get the treasures report, please, Linda?
Treasures report dated November 4th, 2025. We have payable checks in the amount of $413,496.45. We have 13 major vendor checks in the amount of $371,034.20. That's 90% of the total payable checks. Payroll ACH for October 24th, 2025, including social security and Medicare taxes, One bond payment totaling $9,901.06. Grand total payable checks, payable bond payment, $707,394.99.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the treasures report, the October 7th minutes and the payment of bills?
Yes.
Motion by Mike?
Mayor.
Hank? Oh, go ahead.
I have a question, Mayor. What's the PNC equipment, $122,849.27?
Is that... Is it a truck, Steve?
What is it?
PNC equipment.
$122,849.27.
I think it was some...
I think it's a fire truck payment. I think that's the last one due for one of them.
That's... That's nothing for me.
That's Mike, no way.
Yeah, I think so. I think the city might know too. That's a fire truck payment. I think that's the last payment we got one to pay off.
I thought it was some kind of payment on a...
Yeah, that's what it is.
Okay, good, Mayor. Okay, motion by Michael Hanks, seconded by Glenn. Yes, Glenn, hold on, hold on.
Glenn's got a question.
Yes, Glenn.
So, just a quick question with the... I saw, was it $60,000 in hail damage to several police units? Was that something that the insurance paid the city back, or did we have to pay out first?
The insurance will reimburse us for that. We had a $1,000 deductible. We paid a thousand of that.
Okay, so the $60,000 is just the number that was... that we're aware of that has to be paid out?
They sent us a check, and then we have to pay the vendor if we had a fix. It was hail damage on ours.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, we had a motion by Michael Hanks to approve the treasures report. Do I get a second? Second by Glenn. Clarification, call the roll, please.
Glenn.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes, ma'am.
Walter.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
All right, going into old and new business, the first thing, 5.1. We're gonna go ahead and discuss the St. Robert 2025 Veterans Day designation. I'm gonna go ahead and read that to you real quick. This was from the VA, from the Secretary of Veterans Affairs. Basically, as the Vice Chairman of the Veterans Day National Committee, he's pleased to inform us that the committee has officially recognized our location as a regional site for the celebration of Veterans Day 2025. And so they sent us our 2025 Veterans Day designation certificate that we will present to the chamber and to the city at the Veterans Day Parade next week. So, just wanted to share that with you. Pretty proud of that, so... Thanks, Anita, for getting that framed. Next up, 5.2 is employee recognition. This month, we have the distinct honor to recognize Alan Hart. Alan Hart, if you could please come forward. And you're supervisor? Yes, I'm sorry. Sanitation, I'm sorry. Thank you. No, it's okay. I make mistakes. I'm human. I apologize. Thanks, Walter.
Do you have your cell phone you want me to use on, Anita?
I got mine. Nothing against your Android, but...
Mine isn't.
I know, I'm just messing with you. I know you have an iPhone. I'm just messing with you. That was a silent plug to all your Android users, though. Just okay. Please, Alan, please stand right here in the middle. Before I turn it over to Ricky, I just want to congratulate you on being our Employee of the Month. And we'll present you with a few tokens of appreciation here in a second. But Ricky, can you go ahead and please tell us why Alan was selected by your group and then eventually selected by the Alderman to be the St. Robert Employee of the Month?
He's a hard-working gentleman. I've known him several years. He come over when we first started. The city started hauling their own trash. And he's been with us ever since. He was running on the trash route. And now he's an operator in the transfer station. And he's just a hard-working gentleman.
Been with us five years, right, Alan?
Yes.
Five years. One of the things that really stuck out about the application or about the write-up that you all did, that you submitted, was about his coworkers. Kind of singled you out as they wanted you to be recognized as an Employee of the Month because they just appreciate all the hard work you do and, you know, dedication and your work ethic and all those things that just make fun to work around. And so, really, to your entire team, they're the ones that kind of got you here. But we're proud to recognize you this month. And so, you're gonna receive a couple things. First off, you're gonna receive the most important thing. That is the Employee of the Month certificate for November 2025 to congratulate you for being recognized for your outstanding performance and dedication. This certificate is good for eight hours of vacation time. So, basically, it's kind of like a day off for you. The second thing is we've got a little bit of a letter for you. We got a gift card for you. I don't know where this one's to, but it's to a local establishment. And of course, we're gonna present you with city coin, all for your efforts and all that you do. So, we'll go ahead and congratulate you on there. Well, Ricky, you wanna come in for the photo?
Oh, mine. I was gonna clap.
All right, now you can clap, Anita. Very proud. Thank you for taking this care. Thank you very much. Yeah, when you have your fellow coworkers that like what you do, that's pretty awesome. So, thank you, Alan. Appreciate it, and congratulations again. All right, this month, 5.3, moving on to the business of the month. We want to recognize 1211 Fitness. And so, 1211 Fitness, or formerly known as St. Robert CrossFit, was re-designated as 1211 Fitness. So, we were able to go up there and recognize them for being a business here in St. Robert. And so, we want to just congratulate Austin, his wife, and his entire team and for all that they do, being in the city of St. Robert. Moving on to 5.5, we're going to approve the liquor license for M.I.R.U. LLC, MML Patrol. Anita, anything special on these liquor licenses for this one and for... We'll do one at a time, but the next one's for Koba. Anything standing out on those?
No, they've gone... Everybody has signed off on them, the police and...
Okay.
They've gone through the whole process.
All right, perfect. Carrie, if you can go ahead and please read it as a bill?
These are just... I think you just voted to approve.
Oh, just voted to approve? Okay. It hasn't here as my cheat notes had it as that, so it's okay. All right, so doing motions and seconds, Carrie?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the liquor license for M.I.R.U. LLC, which is MML Patrol? Motion... First motion by Reggie, seconded by Linda. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Glenn.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes, ma'am.
Walter.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
All right, the next one, 5.6. This one is to approve the liquor license for Koba Korean Stone Barbecue due to change of ownership. Anita, is that...
Yes, that's what it is.
Yep, okay.
And again, everybody's signed off on it, so...
Okay, perfect. Can I get a first motion on this one?
Motion.
Motion by George, seconded by Walter. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes, ma'am.
Walter.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Okay, moving right along. Now, we're at 5.7. This is a resolution of the City of St. Robert, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to appoint successor directors to the Platter Community Improvement District. Anita, any comments on this?
No, these are mine and Linda's and the mayor's bill and then the... or George's term on this. And it's just that platner, CID, over there.
It's just reappointing.
We have all that probably. And Eagle Stop is in that district.
What's the committee do exactly?
I know this time I put the wrong date, so if you would change that seven to a four, please.
Once a year.
What do you do?
They do nothing. All you do is book the... You have a meeting once a year. And the meeting's coming up. They sent me the email.
There's a little bit of money in there that's supposed to be used for... What is it?
It goes for the road, going into the interstate property there.
Yeah, but we don't ever use any of it, so it's just there. And we just have to say, okay.
Well, we're trying to save up enough to get the front entrance started.
Yeah.
Might be a while.
Couple of years. It's about $15,000.
Okay, any other questions on that, on the resolution?
If you'll just fix the date.
Yes, I'm looking for... Where's...
At the very, very bottom. For some reason, I put seven, and it should have said four.
Got it, Carrie. Thank you. I was looking for that date. Okay, I found it. It's done. Carrie, can you please read it as a bill, please?
Well, it's a resolution, so you just need to do a straight vote, and that should be fine.
Oh, that's it? Okay, thank you.
A motion.
All right, can I get a motion on the resolution? Motion by George. Seconded by Charles. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Glenn.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes, ma'am.
Walter.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
All right, 5.8. This is for us to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Waynesville School District. Anita, do you want to explain to the Alderman?
This is for our Channel 12 crew. The money goes directly to the program. We've done this for years. The one we had was outdated. And so, the school district and I got together, and we came up with this. So, it's starting all over again. But the money goes directly to the program for Channel 12.
Tim's nodding. It's a good thing, right? Well, we appreciate it, that's for sure. You and your team always do a fantastic job, so... Any questions for Anita or myself on this? Okay, Carrie, can you please read it as a bill?
Bill number... Bill number 25-085, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Waynesville School District.
All right, can I get a first motion? Motion by George, seconded by Reggie. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes, ma'am.
Walter.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Second reading as a bill, please.
Bill number 25-085, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Waynesville School District.
Motion by Walter, seconded by Linda. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes, ma'am.
Walter.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Third reading as an ordinance, please, Karen.
Ordinance number 4195, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Waynesville School District.
First motion?
Motion.
Motion by Glenn, seconded by Charles. Motion by Glenn, seconded by Charles. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Glenn.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes, ma'am.
Walter.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
All right, moving on to 5.9. This is the ordinance granting a conditional use permit regarding the real property that we had the town hall for. Any other additional information? I think this one, we pretty much beat this one up pretty good, so... I think we're ready to go. Any questions from the Alderman before we move forward on this one? Okay, Carrie, can you... First reading as a bill, please.
Bill number 25-086, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit regarding real property located at 121-21-122 Primrose Street, St. Robert, Missouri.
All right, thank you. First motion, please. Motion by Walter, seconded by George. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn. Mike.
Yes, ma'am.
Walter.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Second reading as a bill, please, Karen.
25-086, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit regarding real property located at 121-21-122 Primrose Street, St. Robert, Missouri.
Motion.
Motion by Charles, seconded by Mike Hanks. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn.
Mayor, real quick.
Yes, sir.
What is this for? I guess I missed out on this Primrose. What's going on?
This is for the...
The guy that was up talking?
This is for that?
I wasn't here, so I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
Oh, okay. Yeah, no problem.
I had no clue what was going on.
Can you name off the name of the thing again, please?
Yeah, so it's a medical complex. A medical complex unit at 121 Primrose. There'll be 15 beds over there for residents, youth ages really from six to 17 years old.
Similar to what we have or what's in Waynesville?
It is similar, but not exactly. So, these would be medically complex youth. So, this is more of a medical component of that.
Like diabetes, those types of...
Also, it's not juvenile.
So, there is a juvenile piece component to that, but these kids are still from the state. But this is more of a medically complexed youth.
Is this local kids like Missouri, or are you reaching out to Kansas and Iowa?
These will be more local kids in the state of Missouri. Correct.
And Carrie will be...
Correct, yes.
Without an issue?
Yes, sir.
So, you don't have some problems?
That's correct.
Eight-foot fence?
Eight foot?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just for the back, though.
Just for the back?
Yeah, just the back.
Correct.
Okay, could you go? All right. Yeah, call the roll, please.
Glenn.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes, ma'am.
Walter.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
All right, moving on to 5.10.
Reggie, it is an ordinance, sir.
I'm sorry if we didn't do it.
Oh, we didn't. Oh, I'm sorry. I got off. Thank you. Third reading as an ordinance, please. Thank you, Dana.
Ordinance number 4196, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit regarding real property located at 121-21-122 Primrose Street, St. Robert, Missouri.
All right, can I get a first motion, please? Motion by Linda, seconded by Reggie. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn.
And this permit is so we can go in and start building?
The building's already there.
Well, the building's there.
It's the building across from the hotel off of St. Robert.
If I may.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we did change the zoning last time. It's the same property where we did the zoning. And then within each category of zoning, there are uses that are automatically okay to use. And then there are other uses that are okay if the council grants this permit to do it. So, this was a specific conditional permit that they had to get to do a... What's the word that was in there? Where is it? It's something like a medical facility or something. I know it's in here.
Conditional permit?
The conditional permit... Because I'm... Everyone's looking at me right now. I did. Where is it in there?
No one look at Carrie right now.
Look away, look away.
There's a specific... We have, like, if you go into the code section, it will say you can do all of the same.
R2 to C2.
Yeah, well, that's the zoning. So, the zoning is that part, operation of a community treatment center. That's the specific conditional permit that you have to know. Once you've got the zoning right, you have to also permit that specific use. Does that make sense?
Okay.
So, it's that specific operation of a community treatment center that we determined that that was the classification. And it's just not one... It's not in the list of automatic in. It's in the... It's good if we permit it. So, that's why we're doing this.
Makes sense.
Sorry, I couldn't find it.
It's okay. Yeah, we were all staring at you.
So, Glenn. Mike.
Yes, ma'am.
Walter.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to 5.10. Ordinance accepting and approving a contract with Donald Maggie for the Hickory Valley Storm Improvement Project. Anita or Steve want to talk about this?
You can.
Steve, you want to come up here and kind of update us where we're at with this?
You have to be Vanna and hold your mask.
I know that our engineer did get...
Three bids?
Yeah, he did seek out for bids. I think he received two. There was an issue with them. He went back, and they clarified the issue. So, we did get good, hard numbers, solid numbers. I don't know if he's touched base with the property owners yet to get easement for it, but this is to actually get that storm water out from between the houses and go around the edge of it and then back around to the back side.
So, just to refresh everybody, this is where the sinkhole is from them. It's not a lake, but is that water?
Yeah, it's a stormwater retention, but it is kind of a lake that they've made into that. And this is the overflow off of it. So, when you get a lot of heavy rains, it does produce a lot of water. Now, I don't know if anybody wants to...
Does anybody have to remember this? Do you have any questions?
No, because I think you called it as an emergency spending on it. Is that the same one?
No.
Or is that something different?
No, this is not... No, this is way too expensive for that. I think it's different, Glenn, yeah. This is the one where we're gonna have to...
Side by the house, right?
Yes.
Yeah, because I think, didn't we initially talk about, hey, we gotta get this fixed? But then now we're putting it out for contract because it's too expensive. Is that what you're telling me?
Well, the engineers had to come in and properly identify because we have to reroute that overflow valve, basically, off to the left, down the road, and then behind some houses into the drainage to properly drain it so to prevent any further damage to the homeowner we were now here. Jeff Meadows and his team did a great job by doing the engineering architecture. And as Steve was saying, the two bids came in, and the one that you see in your ordinance was the lowest bid.
And you still got to have the price tag on it, so...
It is. It's in there.
That was part of the confusion was we're wanting to sleeve under the road, so it's... You don't have an open trench. Then you're gonna really raise the cost because you have an open trench cut by sleeving the road and pulling the pipe through. We thought that we could just get it pulled through without a sleeve. And the pipe manufacturer come back and said, no, you need to sleeve it. So, that's the reason. If it ever happened to fell again, it would be sleeved, so we could actually... We'd have to dig up one side, but we could pull it out and put new in with the sleeve.
For the long term, it'll be better, yeah. Okay.
And Jeff said they'll start in 90 days, probably after the first of the year.
Okay. Do we really anticipate any issues with the house or anything? The water level's pretty low right now. I mean, there hasn't been much rain or anything.
No. That pond does... It leaks off. It seeps. So, yeah, we'd have to get a pretty, you know, torrential rain to get it to come up and actually flow through. And that's what happened during the sinkhole time. We had a lot of rains. It was filled up. And then we got some real heavy rains on top of it, so I think it was a 36-inch pipe. And it probably was running, you know, over half full, so...
You asked someone to collapse or something, or...
From... Due to a rock.
Due to a rock. That's what it was.
Big, huge rock.
And then just a constant erosion from the thing, so... Okay, I'm glad we're finally...
I think the installation was probably a lot of the cost, too.
Installation was?
Yeah.
Okay. That makes sense.
I'm just glad we're finally getting this across. Any other questions for Steve before he actually sits down? No? Okay, anything further, Anita? You said 90 days.
90 days to start. He told me it'd be after the first of the year when they actually start.
All right.
We gonna have any problem with the easement? Did you say something about an easement or no?
No, there's no easement issue, right?
No easement issue, is there? We will have to see easements.
Oh, we will have to. I thought you said we will not have to.
I will go with the engineer, and we'll talk to the property owner.
Is that the property owner behind the house?
No.
No. That's the current one.
Current one.
Well, I don't see no reason why they wouldn't give us that. They're gonna want that fixed, so... Okay, good.
I think we're staying in the right-of-way most of it.
Right.
It's going across the back.
Yep, it's the back piece of it that's going. Yep, got you. Okay, all right. Any further questions? All right, Carrie, can you please read it as... First reading as a bill, please.
Bill number 25-087, an ordinance accepting and approving a contract with Donald Maggie for the Hickory Valley Storm Improvements Project.
Motion.
Motion by Linda?
Second.
Seconded by Reggie. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes, ma'am.
Walter.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Second reading as a bill, please.
Bill number 25-087, an ordinance accepting and approving a contract with Donald Maggie for the Hickory Valley Storm Improvements Project.
First motion? Glenn, seconded by Walter. Clarification, discussion, call the roll, please.
Glenn.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes, ma'am.
Walter.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Third reading as an ordinance.
Ordinance number 4197, an ordinance accepting and approving a contract with Donald Maggie for the Hickory Valley Storm Improvements Project.
First motion, please. Reggie, seconded by Michael Hanks. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes, ma'am.
Walter.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
All right, that is it. Moving on to 511. Ordinance designating Dana Walker as our deputy city clerk for the city of St. Robert. Until we figure some stuff out, we're gonna designate her as the deputy city clerk. Anything to add on this?
No, we're required to have one, and right now we don't have.
And we need to appoint it.
And we're thinking about some other things we want to do with the city clerk position. So, a deputy would be what we would need right now.
Yep.
So, what's the difference, I guess, when it comes to the job title, deputy clerk versus always a city clerk?
Well, it would be like...
Do they do the same thing?
Go ahead.
It would be like if the city clerk wasn't available, the deputy clerk would step in and do the duties of it. They're in charge of the seal, signing the documents, authorizing things, taking care of, like, the elections. They're in charge of the seal, signing the documents, authorizing things, taking care of, like, the, the elections, uh, doing all of that, getting it then advertised. They just have certain functions they have to do.
And we don't have a city clerk, so we need to have a deputy temporarily.
Oh, I'm glad she was already the city clerk.
No, no.
No, she's not. Your HR ain't not city clerk? Okay. I guess I missed it.
You have a code provision that says if you don't have a city clerk, your finance officer will be the deputy city clerk. We just happen to be where we don't have that position either. So this is just an interim to get through so... Because you need to have someone answering sunshine law requests and doing, certainly having certified documents on behalf of the city. So this is an interim until you can get to where you figure out a law company.
Great explanation, Carrie. Thank you. Okay, any questions else? Great job, Carrie. Thank you for that. Um, alright, first reading as a bill, please then.
Bill number 25-088, an ordinance designating Dana Walker as deputy city clerk for the city of St. Robert, Missouri.
Alright, can I get a first motion by Reggie, seconded by George. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes ma'am.
Walter.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
I'm assuming they've already asked you and you approve of this, right?
I've been doing this job for over a year, so there's a difference between what I'm doing now.
But you have a title now, so...
I, I will be able to sign things.
Okay, yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Uh, second reading as a bill, please.
Bill number 25-088, an ordinance designating Dana Walker as deputy city clerk for the city of St. Robert, Missouri.
Uh, first motion, please, by Reggie, seconded by Wal... Michael Hanks. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn.
Hey Dana, real quick, so you'll still be doing HR and deputy clerk jobs?
The, the exact same as I have been for the last year, other than I'll have the authority to sign stuff.
And she'll do the election stuff, which she hasn't done before, and stuff like that.
And it will handle your HR stuff, hopefully?
Well, hopefully by the time we have, I mean, elections, we're... As soon as we get a finance person, you know, in place, they would be a deputy, and it sounds like there might be another city clerk in place, so then they would handle the elections.
Okay, um...
I'm not sure where I was.
I... You haven't, you haven't started the roll yet. You started it with Glenn.
Okay, Glenn.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes ma'am.
Walter.
Yes.
Um, Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to comments by...
An ordinance, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, all of you. Thank you. Third reading as an ordinance, please. Thank you.
Ordinance number 4198, an ordinance designating Dana Walker as deputy city clerk for the city of St. Robert, Missouri.
Alright, can I get a first motion, please? Motion by Walter, seconded by Reggie. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes ma'am.
Walter.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Alright, now we're done. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Alright, moving on to comments by the alderman. We're gonna start down with George today. Nothing, George? Thank you. Uh, Charles? Linda?
Can't think of anything.
I do want to say, Linda, great job at the Senior Citizens Center with the Halloween. They all loved it.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, it was, it was a lot of fun.
They love games.
Yeah. They were doing like a version of Beer Pong, but no beer.
I saw that on Facebook.
Yeah, and some of, some of them were pretty good at it, so you know they've been doing it before. Reggie.
Good.
Walter. Michael. Alright, welcome Glenn. Alright, um, moving on to comments by the administration. Uh, Waynesville, St. Robert, U Sports. Kendra, is she here? I don't see her.
She is at practice.
Do you have any? Oh, yeah, that's true.
I just had like a small update. Soccer ends this weekend. Saturday's the last day of games. It's been going very well. Um, volleyball starts this week, so we're kind of doing double duty this week because of the overlap. In volleyball, we went, in the three years we've had this, our third year, we went from having two teams to six teams. We're up to 75 players, so that's quite a bit of growth for volleyball. We're the only U Sports organization to offer volleyball in our area, so that's...
Where do they play their volleyball games?
We play games in Lebanon as well as Cammington.
Oh.
So we're in that league. Lebanon, now with our partnership with them, they actually come down and play soccer within our DVS, our soccer league. So it's kind of growing that fast as well.
Where do they practice?
They practice at Easton Free. We wish we had more gym space, but there's a lot of leagues playing basketball, indoor soccer, volleyball, so gym space is a commodity right now. So we just take what we can get and offer the best we can.
Awesome, thanks. Um, Steve, your update, please come on up.
Just a couple things this time. Um, we repaired a, um, a well in Ridge Creek that had a broken, broken pipe down inside of the well. So luckily it was, it was caught before the pipe had broke and the, and the pump had, had dropped out. Uh, so that was able to, to be repaired fairly quickly. Uh, we completed the parking lot, um, across from the Neon Park.
Looks great. It looks really great. I drove by it just an hour ago.
Yeah, yeah, that... Folks are starting to, to use it, I think. Some nights the, it's even full up and some of the overflow's going over there.
Let's just hope we don't have no more donut guys coming.
I was gonna say that.
There's been a few over there.
But it's gonna stay gravel, right?
What's that?
You're gonna stay gravel.
For now.
Yeah, oh, for now, for future.
The goal will be, once we have the money, is to, to pay permanently, but for right now, we don't.
The alpaca lady, she didn't get to park over in the main parking lot, but...
No, you guys did a great job on there. It, it looks really good.
Uh, the water meters all come in for the replacement program that we, um, um, we had ordered water meters for. We're trying to, to get a lot of the old, real old water meters, um, taken out and replaced with the new technology, which they probably were, was not registering correctly anyway, so, uh, we're, we'll have been working on that. There's a lot to change out, so, and we're, we're getting into... Now the, the old yolk bars that's in the ground, the sputnuts that's on them, we're having trouble with those. So they're having to... Some of them are gonna have to be replaced. So I told them, don't run out, don't break, break ones to where, to where, uh, if you don't have any to replace it and you put somebody out of water. So we'll have to, uh, really watch that close till our, till the replacement ones come in. Um, all the winter salt has been delivered, and, uh, right now we're, we're hauling in all the pea gravel for the wintertime. So we'll get that all up and ready hopefully this week, maybe, while I'm hauling all the pea gravel all in. That's all I have.
Ready for winter. Cool. Any question? Yes, Charles?
Uh, Steve, um, I was talking to Chubby's supervisor over there about the parking lot. Last Monday, the state came by to repair it, but they haven't. They came by to repair the hole. The state did, but they didn't show up the rest of the week, and they have not shown up. And, uh, with Veterans Day coming up, Mayor, uh, that hole is pretty deep. Uh, and I'd like to recommend to counseling yourself to, uh, put up some roadblocks uh, to prevent pedestrians from falling into that hole. Now, Chubby has the little orange sticks.
Corn.
Around, but that won't prevent from, you know, invading that area. Uh, he allows the pedestrians to sit on that little median right there, and he was talking about blocking it off, but, uh, those orange cones won't prevent pedestrians from falling in. So I recommend that we put up roadblocks in that little spot to prevent them from going into that area.
Could you take a look at that tomorrow?
Yeah, more than likely. If they, they don't want to go around it and look in it, so they'll just walk around the, the barricades and look.
Well, you know, with, with the little kids, the little kids will wander around. So get inquisitive.
We do have drive plates we could put over there. I don't know, um, you know, if we actually have to use, use a drive plate, then we may have to. We'll take it, you know, but we could cover it with a drive plate.
Yeah. You could just take a look at it tomorrow and see. Just make sure, obviously, safety's important. We want to make sure that no one gets hurt on that.
Thanks, Mayor.
No, appreciate that.
Is your plow nearly ready to go, too?
Yes, plows have been...
Ready for the first.
Gone through and, um, yeah, all serviced, um, tested, uh, calibrated, ready to go.
Awesome. Sounds like you're ready.
You never know.
You're right.
Mother Nature's coming. Alright, thanks, Steve. Appreciate it. Uh, Ricky, transfer station.
A few things. Um, I'll get the October 20 report out of the way. Um, we had, we did 4,162 tons and the average of 180. And then coming up in November, um, Veterans Day on the 11th, uh, we'll be, the transfer station will be closing at 1:00. The, uh... Tuesday residential routes will be moved to Wednesday, the 12th. Then we got Thanksgiving coming up, and, uh, the transfer station will be, uh, um, will be closed the 27th. Will be open the 26th. The Thursday's residential routes, we move to Wednesday. So Thursday's route will be ran Wednesday, on Wednesday. There'll be no curbside recycling for that week for Waynesville.
Just Waynesville. Okay, okay. Just like the flyer says.
Yep.
Perfect.
And then, uh, this afternoon, we repaired, uh, tires on trailer eight and, uh, trailer seven, so they're ready to go for tomorrow. And that's all I've got.
Okay. Um, are we gonna talk about the flooring later?
I had it in mind if you didn't bring it up. You want to talk to him about flooring that he replaced?
Yeah, that's, uh...
So kind of give us the backstory behind this. I know you briefed me before, Randy, but I want to make sure all the aldermen are tracking.
It's where they left off from the previous repair. It's, um, worn down enough where it's gonna have to be repaired. You can see a couple of the rebar showing on it.
And then the back wall we have to repair?
Oh, the back wall, um, the metal. It's just metal back wall. I've got the metal. We just need to, um... I've talked to Steve before, and the electric boys can take the electric trucks, the electric trucks, if they get time. If not, we can, um, have a, uh, team come in.
Okay. Anita, do we have a cost estimate yet on that or not yet?
No, Jeff hasn't worked it up, and Steve was working on it, too. He found a new patch that might be awesome, you know?
Oh, and the floor?
Yeah.
I, I turned that over, I turned that over last year to Archer.
Okay.
Okay, so we, we owe the city council just an update on the next meeting on where we're at with that, because obviously we have to get that done so we don't, uh, have to close the transfer state. And, oh, and the other thing, too, you forgot to mention, is that they're able to do that on the weekend, right? You told me that, Anita, right? We're able to close on... Since it's closed over in the weekend.
This company could do it.
They can do it on the weekends, so we wouldn't lose any, uh, business days at the transfer station. We can maintain that. So that would be a good thing, is that they can come in for the weekend, so, okay. Alright, more to follow on that. We'll have to follow back up with that.
So Ricky, have you doubled your recycling bins? So, uh, there's plenty of room out there now?
Um, I have not. Um, we've been just, um, keeping track of them and dumping them. Um, that was the only issue I've had in a while, so we've kept them clean and, uh, no more reports.
Sounds good.
Any questions for Ricky? None? Alright, thank you, Ricky. Appreciate it. Mike, you're up.
Okay. Alright, a couple things. Uh, 93 total incidents in the last 30 days we had. And we had a, a structure fire this past Sunday evening, uh, risky road area in Waynesville. It was a kitchen fire. Fortunately, we got it out pretty quick. Uh, did put the people out for probably one evening until they get everything cleaned up. So everybody out, made it out safely. They had working smoke detectors, which is a plus, and can't drive at home enough, saying that saves lives. So, so that went, that went rather well. Um, Fire Prevention Week, that was the first week there of, uh, October. That went good. We went to all the schools, the daycares, and they love that. You know, the kids love it.
Love it, yeah.
It's like, let's look at the fire truck and then Sparky, the fire dog, out there, so that went really well, so, always a big hit.
Yeah.
Uh, we done a trunk-or-treat over at the, uh, American Legion. Uh, that was, that was pretty good. And I think we had a second one in the city going on, too. I think the PD worked over there at...
Palms for me.
Palms, wasn't it? Yeah, I think that went pretty good, too, didn't it?
Yeah, it did.
So both places filled up, you know? Uh, so that, that was cool. Um, we will be sending up next, uh, Wednesday, Tuesday, uh, the flag up along the Waynesville Road. We'll both be sending up over the road for the parade, so assisting on that.
Awesome.
And then the next morning, uh, just got off the phone from Queen Fire Apparatus, had to take the ladder truck. I think I told you all the last meeting, it had a crack up in the, in the weld, um, which part of hydraulic lines leaked a little bit. And we, we did send it out to Wayne and Fortwood to get their ladder truck back in service. We were their backup. They've got it back, so we're gonna take it up next, uh, Wednesday morning at 7:30. And then, uh, my guy will wait on it and then bring it back. So we should only be without it probably maybe half a day or lower, so, but...
Well, I appreciate you coordinating with Fort Leonard Wood to make sure we had a ladder truck in the area.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. They, they asked me, please, can you just hold off till we get ours fixed? And, and we worked together, so, you know, it works out really, really well. So, and we actually, I think I told you all, we actually went out there and assisted. Uh, a guy got stuck in a, a crane lift, and we had to get him down. It just wouldn't come down. He wouldn't hurt. It just went up and wouldn't come down. The battery died, it wouldn't come down. So they called us out there to assist, so we did go out there and help. Other than that, that's about all I got.
I see my scanner's been blown up with that, and, and for me to aid for structural fires.
Oh, yeah, we've had it here twice. Uh, they were here helping us, uh, because what happens is whenever we're all out on a, on a structure fire in our district, uh, Lebanon City comes back in and backfills for coverage, and we do the same thing for them. So it works out really well. It's just, it's just easier to have two pain departments to help each other because you can get people, so... Yep.
Well, I appreciate the, uh, great update, and but also the outreach to the community. I know the little kids, you know, absolutely love to see the fire truck, you know? Lightened their day, I'm sure.
Love it, yep.
Okay, questions for Mike? None, okay, moving on. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Alright, just a couple of comments. I'll be brief because we do have to go into a closed session. First off, I want to, uh, again, I spoke to Marilyn, um, Tice's wife, on Saturday, and offered her our condolences on behalf of the city council and the city staff and the entire, um, basically the entire city. She was very touched by, uh, our, uh, by us designating our flags to be flown at half-staff for Tice. She was very appreciative of that. I got to meet Tice's sister as well, and they were just, could not thank us enough for the support that we gave that family, or the family, excuse me, during this time. Um, a- as I said in the Facebook post, you know, uh, Tice, he was a great man, and, and he's gonna be, uh, deeply missed. And so I just want to pass that on to you, that, uh, myself and a few others attended the funeral to bid farewell. And so we just want to say, God rest Tice. Thank you for all that you've done. Uh, Tim, um, we want to thank you again, as always, um, for what you do. Would you mind, uh, doing a quick introduction of, of your team to us?
Jeffrey, Chris, Ken, and Cheyenne. They're from Waynesville and Plano, and we're thankful that you have appeared tonight. We're always happy to be here. Thank you.
I always go back and watch it again, just to see your amazing work that you guys do, and then, of course, to critique myself, of course. But, uh, no, great job. Thank you, Tim. Uh, lastly, uh, there's so much going on, um, but I'm not gonna brief it all because the newsletter's out. Most of it's in there. But I do wanna quickly talk about the Veterans Day Parade and, and, and what's going on. And so, tonight, there'll be a call for support from the community, uh, that will be going out, um, via social media. Due to the government shutdown, regardless if it passes today, tomorrow, or Monday, uh, we will not have any support, um, for the parade from Fort Leonard Wood. Uh, they are not allowed to do anything off the installation during a government shutdown. And so, we're gonna have to call for the community's support. We're gonna need about twenty to thirty volunteers, uh, in the community to come forward and to assist the Chamber of Commerce, uh, to be able to allow us to still do the Veterans Day Parade to honor our veterans. And so, I would ask that if you see that social media out there, to please share it with those that, uh, you might think could actually help out. And it's maybe three hours total, and it could be different positions, whether it's a TCP or helping line vehicles up or whatever. But we're gonna need, uh, the community's support on this, uh, since we're not gonna be able to utilize our NCO Academy that we normally utilize. So, just wanted to put that out there, but the parade is still gonna happen. We're still gonna do it, it's eleven o'clock here at St. Robert's, and we, uh, are gonna honor our veterans. And so, we have a, uh, veteran from St. Robert who will do the invocation, we have a veteran from St. Robert who will sing the National Anthem. And it's gonna be, uh, a wonderful day to honor our veterans, so hopefully I look forward to seeing, uh, everybody out there as we do that. Um, next thing, I want to go down the table real quick before we go, go, ready to close. Mark, do you have anything for the good of the group?
Um, no.
Um, real quick for Mark, I just wanna again publicly recognize, 'cause I think the dust has now settled with the website and the app. And really a big thanks again to Mark, who took on that task, uh, to get all that data transferred from the old to the new. We have received a lot of wonderful comments, not only about the app, but also about the website. And it, it has a lot to do with you and, and what you did, and I know you had to do that on top of your normal duties. So, again, I just wanna publicly recognize you and publicly thank you, um, for the, all the hard work to, to get that done. I'm sure there was some, um, pretty tough nights of, of getting that stuff accomplished, but we appreciate you, Mark. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, uh, Dana, do you have anything for the good of the group?
Um, I applied for lost title on a damaged trailer. I received the title and have submitted that to the insurance company, so I'm, hopefully that they have everything they need. Um, so it's, it's, we're just kinda waiting to hear back from them. And they will acknowledge, receive the title and hopefully get things squared away with us. But I did get that title in hand and mailed it to them last week.
Awesome, thank you for following up, I appreciate that, thank you. Anything else?
No.
Anita?
We hosted the Men Missouri Municipal Power and Energy Pool Meeting last week. That is where we get our, a group, we are fifteen cities that come together and we buy our power for our communities. Um, we decided a couple of years ago that we would add some solar to our energy. And so, uh, that project will go online in twenty-twenty-six. So, those of you that, you know, are into solar and stuff like that, twenty-twenty-six, about thirty percent. As our power contracts fall off from prior years, we have to go out and look for energy, uh, from different sources. So, if, we've talked about different projects they're working on, but, um, that, that's come to fruition when it's ready.
Okay.
Also, I went with Mike Dunbar to the County Commission Meeting on Monday, and we gave a report on the Growth Alliance and everything they have done this year. The airport project is moving along and the build should be coming out of the ground soon, so they're, um, that's not on forever, I think, George.
Yeah.
But, uh, anyway, everybody's excited that the building will start showing. The property that Marys County Bank donated to us, we've got the survey done, we're waiting on a commercial appraisal, a praiser to give us an appraisal on it. So, hopefully we'll get that finished. We met with Stan Robinson on health insurance, it'll go before the Finance Board, we're ready for that. Um, other than that, we've just been busy trying to keep things going.
Real quick, I wanna backtrack to the Marys County, a little plot of land, just to keep everybody updated. The, the ultimate goal is, once that is finalized, is we're gonna turn that into a green space of some type of recreational activity, uh, for the city. Um, so, we're, we're not ready to move forward with anything, we're still waiting on Marys County Bank. Uh, but that's the ultimate goal, is to put a recreational facility out there, um, like a basketball court or something to that effect, uh, for the city, so, but.
The nickel, uh, of all applications submitted, you could talk about that.
Yeah, thank you, so what was her name, Kelly?
Kelly sent the letter.
Kelly received it, matter of fact, she was very appreciative and thankful, uh, for the complete packet. And Anita, I know I didn't share that with you, uh, today, 'cause I just got back, but she was very thankful for the thoroughness of our packet, uh, as well as the support from the community with over three-hundred-and-fifty-two, uh, petition signatures, uh, for that. Um, so, now we just wait to see what happens with the state of Missouri and we'll go from there and see what happens and we'll move forward with whatever they decide. So, we'll keep our fingers crossed and hopefully the little, uh, talks that we had at MML will help get it across the finish line. And we'll do the same thing for the other piece behind Marys County Bank as well, so. Okay, thanks Anita. Carrie, do you have anything else for the good of the group?
Um, I, I know I'm gonna be meeting with you and Anita tomorrow. And I just wanted to share in part, uh, with the board, uh, have reviewed the contacts that Mike, Urban, Tice have with, with the city. I am coding on the prosecution, so I, I mean, I was there today, take everything as a prosecution. I'm, uh, uh, my intent is to carry on until you guys decide what your next, you know, I'm sure they have a conversation about that. But I, I can carry on in an interim capacity as a prosecutor, because I'm in there. And I think the language for city attorney allows me to carry on in an interim basis for at least the next sixty days, uh, because Turley is actually retiring at the end of the year, and I suppose Turley won't really exist at that point. But, um, my, my biggest intent in saying these things is that, you know, we've been dedicated to the city, we wanna carry on operations, make sure you have continuity and that your needs are being covered, and then, you know, we can talk about next steps when we come. But, you know, I have no intention of not continuing to carry on. I've been here long enough that you guys, most of you know me and I know, I know where the bodies are.
I just wrote that down.
So, you know, I, I have enough, you know, I've been here long enough to know how to make sure things get taken care of. And, you know, um, that's my, 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 my intent and my pledge to you, to carry on as long as you want. And then, of course, we can talk about future later.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have a great conversation tomorrow, absolutely looking forward to it.
I'm sure you did, I'm not gonna stop doing.
Once, once we have that and we have the discussion, I'll, I'll update the aldermen and keep them up on what's going on, so. Thank you for that, Carrie, appreciate it. Um, Anita, I forgot to even ask you, do we need to go to closed? I don't think so, do we? We didn't talk about it. I don't know why, I mentioned that earlier, so we do not have to go into a closed meeting, so I do apologize if I mention that, we do not have to go into, there's nothing on the agenda. Uh, before we close, any last alibis from the city council, alderman, anything before we go closed? Alright, we're going to go ahead and vote to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Motion by George, thank you. Seconded by Charles. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes ma'am.
Walter.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Alright, thank you very much, alderman, have a wonderful evening and.
George just wants to get out of here, 'cause he's gonna have headlights on him.